Okay, we'll call the City of Saratoga Springs City Council meeting to order Tuesday, October 3rd, 2017 at 7:00 PM. Present tonight, we have -- present tonight, we have Councilman Porter, Councilwoman Barch, myself, Councilwoman McComber, Councilwoman Wildon, and Councilman Padeska. For invocation, Councilwoman Barch, and for the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Gavin -- sorry, Calvin Pierce from Troop 18. Gavin? Calvin, okay. Calvin Pierce from Troop 1842.
Our Father who art in heaven, we are grateful to be gathered together this evening to make good decisions for our city and for the residents of our city. We ask that thy Spirit might be with us, that we might have wisdom in these decisions. Father, we'd also ask at this time of trouble that those who have lost family members, both near and far, that they might have peace, that they can find ways to serve others around them and to spread joy and love. And we ask these things humbly in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please rise, and please repeat the Pledge of Allegiance after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. And do you want to wait a minute on the -- okay. Yes. Public input, time has been set aside for the public to express ideas, concerns, and comments. Please be respectful in your comments. Please try and limit your comments to three minutes, and please try to avoid repetitive comments. Is anybody here for public input at this time? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public input. Reports. Mark, do you guys have that Fire photo?
The Fire photo?
You have it? I just wanted to tell Chief and his crew thank you. That was a great opportunity to go out and see the new training facility that we have for Saratoga Springs to better serve the residents and better train those who are here to serve and protect our residents. Councilwoman Barch and Councilwoman Padeska were able to make it Saturday morning. It was a great, great training. Chief, you guys did a great job. You guys did a great job with all of it. I don't know if either of you have anything to add.
No, I just wanted to thank Chief also, and then also just for the residents that are here. It's pretty awesome because our firefighters, our fire crews are very resourceful, and so they create facilities to help them train better and become better at their jobs at very, very little cost, which is pretty amazing. And so I appreciate all that they do.
And one thing I wanted to add, too, is just how diverse they are. They have to be prepared for water rescues, house and commercial, their paramedics. These guys are -- do quite a bit for our city. And so to go through three different trainings that Saturday is a lot of fun and to get to know the fire department a little bit more.
I personally would like to thank the fire department for the service to my family. They were the first on the scene with my mom, and I know that they comforted her. So, thank you.
Thank you. Other reports, MAG and Cogger this week. So we'll have more for the next meeting. Councilwoman Barch?
Yeah, I've got a few, Mayor. First of all, a follow-up. We've got a transportation meeting coming up in Orem. Dave, are you attending that? Is that correct? Uh-huh, on the 25th. Okay, perfect. You both of you are? Perfect. And then also just a reminder to all the residents that we've got Fall Festival starting this Friday, or that is this Friday, starting between 5:00 and 8:00. So all kinds of train rides and bounce houses. There will be wristbands that could change into both the bounce houses and the what? I can't remember. Oh, and the petting zoo, that's what it was. There are two parts. And it has the unicorn, yes, unicorn, which will be fun. But it'll be lots of fun. On the website, there are maps about where to park. So we've rearranged the parking this year, so it should be better for traffic in and out. We've also -- I drove past, 400 isn't quite open yet, but it's supposed to be open, which will allow for parking down there. Also, we're only going to have one-sided street parking around the park so as to help with car movement in and out. So please check the maps and see where that's going to be. Basically, parking at the church and parking at the --
School.
At Riverview Elementary School, thank you. Also, um --
Can I just ask, sorry, real quick? Do we have a police officer who's going to be directing traffic at Redwood? Thank you. And then my other, just the Moon Festival right after?
Yes, and Moon Festival, thank you, Michael. Yes, Moon Festival right after.
For those who aren't going to the game.
And then also, I attended the Lake Commission meeting on Thursday morning. So just a quick update, the lake right now is only four feet below compromise, so we've got great water levels, and Deer Creek and Jordanell above are very full still. So they've got plenty of water this year, which has kind of been amazing. As far as the carp and the fragmity, they have this year decreased from last year the carp levels by 33 percent. So that's a huge decrease in poundage per acre of fish. They actually have gotten to 80 percent removal of carp from the lake. So their goal was 75, and they've actually just attained 80 percent. This fiscal 2000 year was, is the last year that they have done a legislative ask for budget. So from now on, it will be strictly from the June sucker recovery funding that will be keeping that maintenance level of carp.
Keep it at 80 percent to 75.
Exactly, yeah. And then also, the fall field trips are happening today and tomorrow at Our Marina. There's, that's for the 4th graders, and there are some 700-plus students that are participating in that. They get as much or more response to those field trips on our side of the lake than they do on the east side of the lake, even though our population isn't nearly the same. Kind of interesting.
And the fragmities, they did spray.
And they did spray again, yes. And they've been working on that. They're also working on getting a different type of land tammer. So the land tamers that are, that's the name of them, that they've been using actually don't do as well in the marshy areas. So they're working on getting a bigger, better machine that is better at that.
To get it down into the marsh, basically, yeah.
Exactly, yeah. Then it can decompose like it's supposed to. And then the final item is, as far as the actual board for the Lake Commission goes, we're contemplating adding some new members to the board, looking at specifically adding TSSD to the board, so that they have a voting right. We'll see. We also asked them to go back and look at the original minutes as to when they decided who to add and who not to, so we can kind of see what their reasoning was behind that. And then also looking at adding a couple of, possibly a seat or two from the South, Salt Lake County municipalities. So where they are oftentimes the end user of the water coming through the lake, that they might have some say in --
Best interest.
-- interest in the lake. So we're looking at that. We haven't decided on those yet. Obviously, those will be some ongoing conversations. That's all I have.
I just had a question. On the TSSD, I mean, were there a body made up of all the local cities? What's the, is it just because they discharge into the lake is the main reason why?
Yes, yeah. So it would be a lot of, we want technical information from them especially. That would also give them a technical seat on the board, because we have not just our legislative board part of it, but we also have our technical committee aspect of it. And that would give some additional technical knowledge to especially the effluent that comes out of TSSD.
Any other reports from the council?
Here we go. Just briefly, I've received a lot of positive feedback about all the great events the city's done this year, and so we appreciate the staff and all the hard work. I wish personally I could have attended more, but the addition to our family this summer made it a little bit challenging. My wife just didn't want to go. I didn't know what her problem was. But anyway, I appreciate all your work, and really a lot of good feedback from the community on what's been done this year. That's all I got.
Perfect. Anything, Mark?
Yeah, Jeremy forwarded you an email, and it's regarding the tree, moving the trees from the SSD program.
I was going to bring it up. I wasn't sure if we were supposed to.
Yeah, no, we were going to bring that back to you. We do have that scheduled, but he's now confirmed his price, which is three times what he told us originally.
Yeah, so the $1,250 includes digging the holes on both sides and replacing the dirt. And so I think we need to make sure that they understand they don't have to replace the dirt when, on the, when the tree is removed. UDOT will take care of that when they're doing all of the movement. So the $1,250 is to fill the dirt when you take the tree away, put dirt back, and to dig the hole and get rid of the dirt on the other side. So I think that if, if staff would be, is interested, and we can use that, some of those resources to save money, but if they do everything from beginning to end, it would be $1,250. But I think that we could save some money with not having to replace the dirt where the hole, where the tree comes out.
So my only concern on this is UDOT authorized us to, about $7,500 worth of work on this on the top end. It could triple on the bottom end if he's not willing to come down on his price. Do you have a direction for us as to, we'll try and get the price down, but --
Save the best trees.
If we can't get his price down significantly enough, can we work with Michael to kind of select what's most appropriate?
We talked about what, maybe like $5,000 worth of trees?
Seventy-five hundred.
Okay, so maybe we take that 7,500 and say however many we can get out with that funding.
Okay. If that's good with you, then we'll try and get his price down on some of those other cleanup and refill issues.
Because some of the trees actually were borderline, like success rate, because they aren't, they weren't in the best condition. There are about seven to nine trees that are absolutely ideal for transplanting, so I can help with that.
Okay, if, I'll have Jeremy work with you and with the proposer on that. Thanks. Other than that, we do have need for a closed session tonight, but I think that's about it for staff this evening. Thanks.
Public hearings, we have the Annexation Policy Plan Amendment, 7377 North, 9150 West.
Yes, it is. I just turned it on. No, it would be nice to have one. Thank you. So I'll be brief, hoping to add to your brief meeting tonight. This doesn't want to go away. Well, hopefully I'll be brief for you guys, too. Anyway, so tonight, we have a public hearing and potential action on an amendment to our annexation policy, specifically our annexation, the expansion map, so the boundary expansion map. We did one of these last year. Annexation policy was originally 2003, amended in 2012, and then again last year. Last year was, and 2012 were just map amendments. How do I make it go?
Go.
There we go. So as most of you know, this is in an area where we've been looking at a number of annexations recently, the Pirelli annexation, the McLaughlin annexation, the Johansson annexation, and this particular one pertains most specifically to the Webb annexation. So this is a composite, and these, in general, these are older concept plans, so most of them have changed a little bit, but I just wanted you to see this because it kind of puts it all in context. The little piece right here is where we're proposing an amendment to the annexation boundary. Right now, it goes like this, just straight across. And this parcel is owned by the Webs, and it's 16.88 acres, and it's one parcel. So I don't know why, when the line was drawn, why we didn't include the entire parcel. But it wasn't done, so we're going back and amending that at this point in time. There's another depiction of it. This will be the official map that goes with the ordinance and to be included in the proposed annexation boundary. So a little bit on process, the Planning Commission, according, it's all governed by state law, and the Planning Commission is required to do a public meeting that's specifically oriented and noticed for all of the affected entities. And that meeting was held on August 24th. Then the Planning Commission held a public hearing at their meeting on September 14th and made a recommendation to the City Council. And now it's your turn to hold a public hearing and hopefully take action. So the Planning Commission forwarded a positive recommendation to the City Council to amend the Annexation Policy Plan Expansion Boundary Map on September 14th, 2017. And I, this is straight from the staff report, I laid out some alternatives for you, but the recommended alternative is that you approve the amendment to the Annexation Policy Plan with the findings as indicated in your staff report.
Okay, we'll open the public hearing. Is anybody here for comment on the Annexation Policy Plan Amendment? Okay, seeing none, I will close the public hearing for the Annexation Policy Plan Amendment. Is there any discussion from the council of these properties we've gone over multiple times in the last six months? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve, that the City Council approve the amendment to the Annexation Policy Plan, specifically the amendment to the Annexation Expansion Area Map as shown in the attached Exhibit 1 that was publicly noticed, based on, and based on the findings in the staff report.
I'll second. First, from Councilwoman McComber, a second from Councilwoman Porter. Any further discussion on the motion? Councilwoman Padeska?
Aye.
Wildon?
Aye.
McComber?
Aye.
Barch?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll go back to the presentation.
So today, I wanted to take some time to honor one of our volunteers that is actually going to be moving, and so we're losing her, which I'm a little devastated about. This is Angela Thompson, and she has volunteered, can you, she volunteered for, has volunteered for the civic event since almost the first day that she moved into our awesome community. She began by assisting Katie Higbee with our Entertainment for Splash, and then when Katie started up the Arts Council, she took those responsibilities over. While working full-time and raising her five daughters, she has spent countless hours researching bands and other forms of entertainment that we have used at such events as Splash, the Christmas tree lighting, and our Summer Celebration Series and other events that we've had here. Since Angela took over planning our Free Splash concert, we've had a wide range of family-friendly entertainment culminating in our city's favorite group so far, which is the Party Crashers. And it's been a pleasure to get to know her and work with her. I thought it was for nine years, because I just can't remember a time when she wasn't here, but she's lived here for seven, so it was for seven years. And her contribution to the City Celebrations Committee will be sorely missed, and our next entertainment chair is going to have some pretty big shoes to fill, because I just, I sure appreciate everything that she's done for our community and for everything that I've learned from working with her. She's just been such a valued asset, and we're really going to miss her. And so the mayor has a small gift to give her, to thank her for her contribution and all of, just everything that she's done for our community to help our citizens and help us enjoy our great community.
Thank you. Oh, thank you so much.
For having the counsel of the city. [applause]
Not sure yet.
Well, they're lucky.
Thank you.
You could also get the official mayor hug award.
[laughing]
She's a fine mayor.
Oh, she knew I delegated it to Wildon.
Oh. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. This year's summer series was great for the 20-year. I know there's a lot of people that put a lot of work into that. You guys did a great job to kick off our 20-years celebration.
Mayor, I apologize. We skipped Item 4A. If we just circled that for later tonight, that would be great. I apologize.
4A?
Run to reports. November meeting scheduled.
Oh, well, let's just do it right now.
We had originally scheduled a meeting for the first Tuesday, and we wanted to propose dropping that meeting, picking up the following Tuesday meeting. Is that what we're doing?
[inaudible]
Okay, and I apologize. We're looking at that. Given the time that it's going to take to canvas election results, I'm not sure that having the second week work for a council meeting to, to accept a canvas, I almost, I think that we're tentatively shooting for that, but I think that realistically, it's going to be the third week in November, probably, realistically by the time we get the canvas results. I don't know. Cindy, you're kind of the expert on this. Do you want to jump in?
[inaudible]
That's like it, by 5:00 PM?
Midnight.
So we'll have a meeting at midnight?
It's Cindy's defense. She's just the messenger.
I know.
I just want her to shoot them. I mean, oh, yeah.
So we can, well, the week of the 21st, I believe, is the week of Thanksgiving. Is that right? And so that's why we were kind of aiming to not do it.
But school's still in session at that point.
School is. I don't know what your all travel schedule is, so that's kind of --
I'd be in town.
Yeah, I'll be in town.
Well, and you could certainly hold electronic, an electronic meeting for the purpose of meeting as, you know, the, accepting the canvas results.
Okay.
Their only business on the 21st is that one item.
I think we've got possibly audit acceptance, so it should be, hopefully it's fairly quick, but we didn't want to do a jam-packed meeting.
You can keep it to those two items?
If we can, yes. We will certainly try for it.
Oh, we can.
So that would just be the one meeting then on the 21st of November, which it sounds like it works for the council.
Okay.
And then we don't have?
Not the 14th.
In December, right?
We don't have, we don't have other developments?
Right now, we've only got one tentative item. If you're okay, we'll keep it, we'll keep it queued up.
Oh, we only have one tentative item for the 14th overall?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We would need to do the 14th and 21st.
That's fine.
Then what we'll do is we'll, we'll get the majority of them taken care of on the 14th, with the 21st just being that one item.
Okay.
See if we can break the two-minute record.
Perfect. Okay.
Because I'm not here.
Thank you. Okay, a public hearing on code amendments, Title 19, Ordinance 17-30.
So Mayor and council, if you recall from the August meeting, we had these two sections that were tabled for further review by staff and further refinement through the Planning Commission as well. As it's gone through the Planning Commission and staff, there have been some further amendments. However, as we were looking at the agenda, we realized that these fee, this adoption of the fee amendments was on as well. And as I compared the two, the section about administrative review of applications with the fees, they didn't really line up perfectly. So what we'd recommend on that section is that we, we table that. Open the public hearing, so you can get public comment on that, as well as for 1902, 190302, and then of course, if the council has any feedback on that, I'd be happy to take that back. But what the proposal is, is rather than have a process where it goes through staff to determine if it meets the code, staff would not even accept it as complete until it meets the code. And then that'll line up a little bit better with, with the fees, because really, the intent of that section was to make sure that there wasn't a vesting until it actually met the code. We go that process instead, it'll line up really well with the fees, as well, it's not going to be staff rejecting applications, it's going to be more of, we don't accept it with a, a date of being complete and meeting the city code until, physically, it's not vested until it actually meets the code, which is what the intent of the statute is anyway. We think that, that'll work a little bit better. And I'd like, like that portion to be tabled, so I can make some further refinements to that, unless the council has any objection to that.
So you're recommending we table Title 19, but still hold the public hearing tonight?
He just wants to table.
190302.
Okay.
I believe there is, there are people here that want to speak, you know, during the public hearing on 190302. We have a public hearing now, we can then make, we can adopt those, those further amendments later, based on what I just presented. But you still want us to, to do 1912 and 191311? So 19, so, yeah, I did want to bring up one point. Commissioner Barch mentioned that she, sorry, not Commissioner, Councilmember Barch mentioned that some of this terminology used in this section, this is, this section is 191311 was drafted because we have basically a rule in the code right now that requires all power lines and distribution lines, anything, any overhead utility to be buried. And we found out through Rocky Mountain Power that it's extremely expensive to bury those, those transmission lines. Hundreds of thou, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars per, per pole. So very expensive, and so we wanted to limit the requirement in the code, so it did not apply to transmission lines. And we also wanted to refine that section, that language, but one of the concerns was some of these, these terms that we use may not be terms that Rocky Mountain Power uses. Like for instance, there's some language about surface-mounted transformers, pedestal-mounted terminal boxes, meter cabinets, concealed ducts. Those were some exceptions to requiring those, all those facilities to be buried, so we didn't want to open the door up too much, wanted to use, or Councilmember Barch wants us to use terms that are consistent with Rocky Mountain Power's terminology. So, so we need to hold off on that one as well? Well, I'm, I'm more than happy to, whatever the council would like to do on that, I'm more than happy to go back to Rocky Mountain Power and ask for their input on this, this section. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, so the one section that we were talking specifically about was in Section 3D, for example, where it's talking about meter cabinets and mounted terminal boxes and things like that. Those are things that, and again, because it's a terminology item, those are things that in some instances, we have required businesses to screen, and so if it's that kind of a facility, then we should also be requiring whoever is supposed to be burying, or in this case, not burying those, to screen them. So we want to make sure that that screening's still in place, and also make sure that we're using the right terminology, so that it's Rocky Mountain Power that requires us to not bury these items because of what they are, whereas we would prefer to have everything buried if we could.
In picture of those items, right?
Yep, exactly.
Right. So whatever the council would like to do, I think that there are people here that came for the public hearing.
Okay.
So if we hold a public hearing now, then we can pass these at the next available opportunity.
Okay. Well, I will open the public hearing on the code amendments for Title 19.
So tonight, I'm here as part of the Utah Valley Home Builders Government Affairs Committee. One of the concerns that we had was with 190302.
Say your name or --
Sorry, Chriselle Travis. Sorry. Sorry. So in 190302, Item Number 4, there's language where it gives the, the staff 20 days to review, but it only gives the developer 10 days to respond. And if we don't respond, if you continue through that language, it gives the, the staff the ability to reject our application. My question is, what happens if we don't respond in that 10 days and it gets rejected? Is it a new application and a new fee? And why can't we have the same 20 days that the staff has to make the responses? Now, we can respond faster than that if we choose to, but if there's a penalty for being rejected in a timeframe, we'd like to have it be the same timeframe for review. And then --
I was going to say, my snarky comment is because sometimes our wonderful developers bring us like 10 and 15 plans a day.
Today would be the day. But that's a different review. That's building permits. These are development permits. So the question is, what happens if it gets rejected? Is it a new application, and does the process start over? I think Kevin kind of clarified that in the fact that we wouldn't be vested until we've gone through some reviews, and at least make sure that we're in compliance with the codes. So I just wanted some clarification on that. And then I think that was all. Thank you. Oh, there was one more. So on the transformer transmission things and the screening, I know that we like to have them screened, but in some cases, it's not allowed. Rocky Mountain has some planting requirements, so that would be one thing that we'd want Mountain has some planting requirements, so that would be one thing that we'd want to have clarified as well.
Kevin's here for the public hearing.
Okay, seeing now, I will close the public hearing portion of the code amendments. Kevin, you'll go keep chomping at the mic.
Okay, so I guess Mark wants to address that, the planting of the transformer and transformer.
Yeah, there is actually specific, and it's, it's part of Rocky Mountain's union contract with their linemen within certain distances. So Kevin will address that with them as part of that. But we do need to make sure that we follow that particular code, like for example, you can't have something within X feet of the front of doors and other things because from an access standpoint, they won't create a safety issue.
You bet.
Is there a way, like sometimes in state code, we just, instead of restating what's in state code, we just refer to it? Could we do it something similar for Rocky Mountain? So if they change terminology or requirements, we don't have to go and change our code, it just meets their requirements?
Does that make sense?
And with hyperlinking today, it's easy.
Sure. Yeah, I think we could do that as much as possible. But the, the issue of burying power lines and utility lines, Rocky Mountain Power doesn't regulate that.
So we would do that.
They leave that up to the jurisdiction to determine. So it's not, there's no state, state law requirement. They may have regulations about what, what is a transmission line versus just a regular power line.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm referring specifically to items where we wanted to line up the definitions and then also the screening where it's not allowed. Just the things that are very clearly aligned in their policy or whatever.
Well, and again, I think that's where those hyperlinks come in really, is really nice, because you were then, for example, with transmission line, you can then click on the word "transmission line" and it takes you to Rocky Mountain Power and they define what a transmission line is, what voltage it is, et cetera, et cetera.
Just don't have it go to Wikipedia, so.
Sounds good. Yeah, absolutely. I, I, anytime you can avoid conflict and having to go back and change the code because Rocky Mountain Power changed terminology, absolutely. To address Chriselle's other concern about 190302, so the proposed change is actually going to negate the need to make that change because really what's going to happen is it's not going to be deemed complete until it's actually, application fees have been paid, it's, the application's complete, it includes all the items that are required, and it meets the code. And so we'll accept it and we'll continue to process it, but it won't receive an actual data vesting until it's, it meets the code. So that's the proposal. Instead of-
Are we okay with 20 days?
So in reality, it won't be fully accepted. It'll be, like, it won't receive any vesting, but it also won't just, it won't actually be accepted. It'll be sitting there, it'll be kind of going through process, but in reality, it's not accepted at all.
It'll be, yeah, it'll be sent back to the applicant to correct those things that need, need correction. And it will not be accepted for the purposes of vesting under the current code until it, it actually meets the code.
So then the difference between the 10 days and the 20 days actually won't exist?
Yeah, there's not going to be any rejection by staff. It's just going to be sent back for additional changes to make sure it meets the code.
So why do we have 10 days in there if that's not?
Yeah, that's gonna be-
That's what he's saying, is it's going to all go away.
That'll go away.
Can you give her that too? Okay.
That'll go away. But it will be important to specify that it's not accepted as far as, you know, vesting date until it meets the code.
10 days, it's 10 days.
And there won't be any need to refund fees. We'll take the application fee, but it's not going to be rejected. There's no, not going to be any issue with determining if fees should or shouldn't be refunded.
So there's no limit? They can wait nine years and give back the information, and we have to like do all the work to pull out all that information and not know what's happening at Greensprings?
No, well, they-
Oh, wait, did I say that out loud?
They won't be vested under the code until it meets the code.
But they can just come back though, but that's a lot more administrative duty because the, it might be completely different employees. Even two years later, they then have to review everything again. So there's no limit on how long it takes for them to get back to us?
We could put some sort of sunset on that.
There needs to be, I think also with the, with the fees that come in, technically what you said also is that we can receive the fees and they might not actually have their application accepted. But at what point do either, first of all, those fees need to be returned to them, or at what point are those fees used up because it's been kind of hanging around and going through process even though it's not actually been accepted? So those are the other things we probably need to look at at that point.
And we'll talk, we'll, we'll talk about that, discuss it.
Yeah, as, as part of the fee schedule, we do propose that if there's an excessive number of reviews, then we then would charge them for that. So-
We worked on that last night.
Right, but this is, this is before it's actually even accepted. So technically, those reviews wouldn't happen until after.
So for example, you know, we, we do have, we do have some, yeah, we do have some flexibility in that. We know what our cost fee schedule is, but we can address that. The one thing that I did want to point out is, if I could, I'd like to ask Chriselle a question and get her feedback on that. Hot seat. Do you, I mean, you, you've heard the conversation.
You need to come to the mic.
What, what do you think is a fair time period at which point we say, no, you're done, or, you know, we've, we've met with you 17 times or whatever, you got to pay more fees because this is just ridiculous? What, what, what would you recommend from your organization's concept?
Well, the faster we can get through the process, the better. But sometimes the lists that we receive from cities repeat themselves sometimes. You guys have gotten much, much better from four years ago when we started this whole, whole process. But I would think that after three reviews, if you can't get it right.
Yeah. And so I think that's fair, but also what kind of a timeframe, if it's sitting dormant, if we've kicked it back to a developer, what point do we say, you know, it's dead as opposed to?
I would say six to 12 months. I know that in Provo City, you have six months to take action on your application and then they, they refund your fee if you haven't used it all.
They refund whatever portions left.
So like 180 days or something like that?
Okay.
We'll, if you have some advice, give it to us and we'll incorporate it in.
So-
Just word nicer than Provo.
No, we're nicer than Provo.
The, the thought actually was that the fee would be charged and then a partial refund. So if you look at the fee schedule, it's based on number of reviews. Some of them take much longer. For instance, a community plan is, it's, the fee is based off of five reviews. So let's say that the, someone submits an application for a community plan and it takes staff three reviews to determine if it meets the code, so then it can be accepted as complete. Or actually, let's say that it, it gets dropped after the third review by staff, then there would be basically a three-fifths charge of, of that fee. So it could line up really well with the fee schedule. The whole point is that staff isn't rejecting an application. We don't want that language there. That's going to, that's going to upset some people, we thought. And so it makes much more sense to say it's not even accepted as having a vesting date until it's, it actually meets the requirements of the state code, which is what the state code is intended for. I think Gordon had his hand, hand raised.
Still have public input open?
No, I closed public input. Before I let Kevin talk.
We were just having a discussion whether the public hearing was closed, and he had closed it.
So I had just two other items that I wanted Kevin to, to look into. And one was when residential subdivisions are allowed to have existing overhead facilities and when they have to bury them or whatever. So he was going to look into that, but my, my thought was that it was for only in, really, we only want that left in agricultural zones. We really don't want that in actual residential zones. But he mentioned that there were a couple of minor subdivisions that had taken place where we had allowed that. No, not in condos. It was like, so little, like-
It was, it's called Sage Hills.
Yeah.
So what, what, the whole point of it is if it wasn't a subdivision requirement previously when the plat was allowed to be recorded, that it didn't make sense to require the actual lot owner who's there applying for a building permit to bury that power line. We would catch that. That is only going to apply to very, a very few amount of, of properties in the city because most of it is, is new construction. But if, if it had gone through the plat process and we had accepted and approved the plat and had, had gotten recorded without requiring that power line to be buried, individual homeowner, lot owner, wouldn't be required to bury it. That's the intent of it. If it's, I'll, I'll look at and make sure that it's, it actually says that. But that was the intent of that, that particular provision.
And Mayor and Council, just so you're aware, I've, I've actually asked staff to go through and do an inventory of all the above-ground power poles so that we can actually kind of have some analysis and conversation relative to that. So that's something that we'll be working on in the, in the coming months. It won't be done for, it won't be done for this, but we're going to inventory basically every above-ground power pole in the city and then, you know, kind of help to formulate some of the policy discussions relative to that. So-
And even have discussions to help down the road when opportunities arise, to help those people bury those lines, when that's, when possible.
Yeah, for example, you know, Centennial Boulevard, you know, that's going to be something that's going to be addressed as part of the Redwood Road project. There are, there are some things where it makes sense. It doesn't make sense for us to go out, take a bond and underground everything, you know, citywide. But let's work on, on trying to figure out a good policy moving forward.
The only other item I had was on utilities under 1912 to 7, and I wanted Kevin to look into the definition of what utilities are. My concern is, is that when saying, and this technically isn't changed, it was actually existing, but when saying no pipe conduit, cable, waterline, et cetera, shall be above ground ever, except for the big transmission lines, we have hand lines, wheel lines, pivot lines, those are all above ground that are part of agriculture. So I want to see what is a utility. Likewise, we have conduit, for example, to run, run up our pavilions that allow us to take electricity from the, the box up to the lights, et cetera, et cetera. And I don't want to, so at what point does it become a utility? Is a utility, once it enters your private property, is it, when does it not a utility anymore? When is it just part of your own personal system?
Who would have thought power lines had so much to discuss? But it absolutely does.
Other discussions on this?
I have a motion.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we continue the code amendments, Title 19, Ordinance 17-30 dated today, and direct staff to make changes in accordance with discussion tonight.
I'll second that.
First, Councilman Porter, second, Councilman McComber. Any further discussion on the motion? We'll call McComber.
Aye.
Barch.
Aye.
Padescu.
Aye.
Wildin.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, business items. We have the land purchase agreement between Property Reserve Incorporated, PRI, and the right-of-way for the Signal 800 West and Pony Express right-of-way.
Chairman?
Mayor and Council, we have a property acquisition agreement that matches other, there was one slight modification that Barch pointed out regarding hazards. Talked about that, to, to make that modification, to make sure we're not outside our control by that. This is a signal that we're installing that you get. Jackson, best, a lot of the work's been done, we're just waiting. Thought later, I thought later this month we should, this would just be the acquisition widening, we're going to have to buy a lot more property, potentially get acquired. We're just kind of-
Comment?
So the item that I was talking about is on 5.4 hazardous substances. And if you look at the literal way that this is written, if, as we are going through and finishing up construction on this project or anything else, and I'm going to use, you know, crazy worst-case scenarios, whatever else, but it is what it is. It's literal. So if some tanker coming down that filled up, you know, the Maverick and Eagle Mountain or wherever, comes trucking down the hill and crashes in that intersection and spills onto their property, we become responsible for cleaning it up 100% by this contract. And so, on the, yeah, not just on the land that we own, but on the adjacent land that we might encumber partially with, yeah. So I just want to make sure that we add in there basically that it's, that we have control over any, because, or if their farm truck spills or something like that and one of our guys finds it, we become responsible to clean up, by the technical language of this contract.
I believe what you meant obviously was they want us to be responsible for activities during the construction progress.
Which makes perfect sense.
Sure, it says that, that it's-
So that's my only thing, is just to have Kevin add language, basically narrowing that slightly so that we're responsible for those things over which us or our, yeah. That's it.
Yeah, I have to think about that a little bit more. I think I was, as we were discussing that earlier, I had a different agreement in mind. So, so would it be-
Can we approve that and direct you to work that out to protect the city?
Yeah, let me, let me ask some questions though, so I just am clear about what the direction is. So we, right-of-way, okay, so 800 West Pony Express Parkway, I think that that's probably the intent of that language is if someone spills it while they're on, on the road, that we're responsible for it.
At the most commercial carrier, you have insurance that liability would go back to-
Yeah, I mean, now, that doesn't, that, all that says is, or PRI doesn't want to be held responsible for that. So we would, we'd have to pay for those costs. Of course, we'd then go get reimbursement from the trucking company that, that made, that spilled the hazardous substances.
Sorry, that we're responsible for and that we have to take care of, of that cost, is what the, the contract says.
To clarify, so your concern is if, while we're doing construction, another truck spills-
Or even one of their farm trucks.
Their farm trucks on that land. But once construction's over, then we're no longer, that's how I read it. It's only during the construction. But there is that period of time when we're on that construction. Okay? So that makes sense.
I just want to make sure that we're protected as a city and that there are no loopholes by which we end up getting charged, things we shouldn't get charged for.
I think what, what I was going to propose is just have a clause in there that says it doesn't apply to acts of seller that occur after closing. So we accept the property. Typically, their hazardous language says that we accept the property as is, and any hazardous substances aft, after we acquire it, we're 100% liable for. So my proposal was just add that sentence that says this paragraph shall not apply to acts of seller that occur after closing. And then I can add, I can add some more language that-
That's just their trucks, yeah. I'm thinking more because it also talks about the fact that any of the land that we, because it gives us also right to entry onto their land as we're doing the construction, and it talks about their land, not that we're purchasing, but the rest of their land. And that's my, my concern is that it's the growth of that. Obviously, we're going to need to take care of our own property and the things that happen on our property.
Do we have to leave the nature of work there?
Yeah, we, I just want to make sure I understand your concern. I, I think that addresses part of your concern, adding that sentence that I just read. What else, what else is, are you concerned about? So I can add some more language to address that. What I'm understanding from Councilman Barch is she's concerned that we are now outside of the time of construction. Are we, is this hazardous substance clause? I'm, I've been looking through here, I'm looking for language that says it's only during construction.
Because this is part of the temporary construction license agreement. This is talking about the land around it too, not just the immediate land that we're purchasing right now.
Okay, so that one sentence will apply to the land that we're purchasing. You also want some language that addresses, basically, that clause expires with respect to the license after we've completed the construction activities. Is that what, that's what you're asking, correct?
Yes, to some extent.
Okay.
Okay, so if their farm truck comes up and they've got pesticides in there, and it is on their property, not on the property we're purchasing, but right next to it, somehow it gets a hole in it, it starts leaking, one of the contractors that is working for us sees the leak and reports it, we be, by this terminology, by this language, we become responsible for the cleanup of that, even though it's not our spill, it's not on our property.
That's the acts of seller, because they're the seller.
Right, but-
That covers the acts of seller, but doesn't cover the Maverick.
Okay, that's, that's perfect. So let me-
No, this is, this is in the temporary construction, so it would only be expired upon completion.
Yeah, I, I got it. So I'm going to add a clause that, as far as with respect to the property we're purchasing, it doesn't apply to acts of seller after closing. With respect to the licensed property- With respect to the licensed property, it doesn't apply with respect to those spills and other instances of liability that happen after construction's completed.
Or, or not under our control.
And then the third, yeah, that's, and that's what I'm gonna hit on right there, it doesn't apply to...
Acts by...
Acts outside of our, out of our, outside of our control, acts by third party, as well as acts of PRI during the construction.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah. I will entertain a motion.
Sure.
I move that we approve the land purchase agreement with Properties Reserve, Inc., PRI, right-of-way for Signal at eight hundred West and Pony Express Parkway, resolution R seventeen dash ninety-two dated today, with the addition of the language over hazardous materials discussed with our lawyer this, today.
Second.
I have a first from Councilman Barch, second from Councilman Porter. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, Porter.
Aye.
Comber.
Aye.
Podeska.
Aye.
Wilden.
Aye.
Barch.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Central Utah Water Conservancy District grant agreement for advanced metering infrastructure. Thank you, guys, for doing the pledge tonight.
Mayor and council, we applied for and received a grant in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, water conservation, implement an advanced metering infrastructure. We discussed this a couple times before, and I tried to be pretty detailed in the staff report, if you've read it, about the difference between what we do now, which is we read what happens, and we know you water now, and if there is a, we don't use more, we're kind of blind, and this would, all that information, the term, I guess, they use as a higher resolution, we're gonna get hourly resolution, huge when it comes to educating our customers.
Or for spotting a leak.
Leaks, unusual activities, you know, strange weird spikes and flow, so that could be, a leak could be a low continuous, or a leak...
Yep.
...to meter, so it allows us to provide better service to our customers, allows us to water, which is why... And I discussed later in the staff report about the cost of the implementation, right now, the budget has sixty-four thousand dollars, grant that takes us to a hundred and four thousand, cost estimate we got from Itron, who provides the hundred and forty thousand offer that comes with that. That goes to the towers, CO, and then site hardware in the field. This is a disclaimer, probably some... That's something I would come back to. This item is just for the grant.
I think this is a great step forward in what we're doing, so. Okay, any discussion from the council on this?
I think that we're gonna be a poster child, as we already are, on how we can help conserve water, and other cities will be following suit, to make sure that we have responsible use, and we pay for what property right we have, so thank you.
Okay, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the Central Utah Water Conservancy District grant agreement and advanced metering infrastructure AMI project, resolution R seventeen dash ninety-three dated today.
I have a first from Councilwoman Barch.
Second?
Second from Councilwoman Podeska. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, Councilman Wilden.
Aye.
Comber.
Aye.
Podeska.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Barch.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Okay, fee schedule amendments, planning, development, and engineering fees.
How many pages was this packet, I can't... I'll take it from you, and then I'll bring it up when you...
I always like to...
Mayor and council, I mercifully let Zion's Bank off the hook from showing up again tonight, so if there's any changes or any issues, we'll pass that back to them. What we have before you is basically the fee study, fee study and schedule that we had proposed last week. I've spoken with several of you in the last two weeks regarding some of these questions. I'm happy to tackle any questions for you. I have a, you know, I sent out a spreadsheet earlier, if you'd like to go through the spreadsheet and run through through some scenarios, but you've got that, should you want to run different scenarios. Staff is recommending the fee schedule that was in the proposed document last council meeting, and that was part of the packet this week. Again, just, just to reiterate, when we came up with this fee schedule, you know, staff spent a considerable amount of time working with the consultant to come up with what we felt was an appropriate number of applications, reviews, different things like that, and really come up with what we felt was fair to your, your typical, your typical application, including, you know, the, the fee schedule that you've got. We'd be more than happy to discuss it with you, but basically what we've, we've added across the board is, if a project is needing additional reviews, additional trips to the city council, or the planning commission, or whatever, we've built in a fee structure that will allow for that. Conversely, if the council were to change in the future, for example, let's say a fee didn't need to, or a, an application didn't need to go to the city council, we also have the ability to back those fees out as well in the future from this analysis, because we've broken down those costs. This also includes some new fees for engineering reviews and different things like that, so it's, it's quite comprehensive, and we feel like it captures what we, what we need to do. Again, the one thing that I wanted to go back and kind of demonstrate, and this was something that we had talked about with, with Zion's Bank, you can see that, that, you know, our planning fees, with the exception of a few anomalous spikes, has not covered the cost of development within the community, and, and also, my mouse is not working, also engineering is in the same boat, in that it's, it's, it's covered the fees in two fiscal years over this fifteen-year period, so, that's kind of what brings this to you. We believe that this is an accurate portrayal, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Otherwise, you've got your recommended fees in front of you.
Councilman Porter?
Yeah, I get to go first. All right, in general, first off, I want to say I'm glad we're doing this, because this, you know, we can't have the residents subsidizing development, that's just, that's not fair. That isn't what property taxes are for, so the development fees need to cover the cost of development, so I'm glad, I'm glad we're, we're looking at this, and I also want to thank staff, you know, for, you know, there's a huge amount of data here, for those that have looked at it, I guess there's nobody in the audience except for Leah, but...
Look at Chriselle.
Oh, and Chriselle.
And Robert Schellmann, but you can...
And this, but, so, I, in general, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the direction we're headed, I just have a few questions on maybe some of the more specific items, just so that I, I can understand the reasoning of the direction we're going. The first one, I'll just, I'll start at the, the very beginning, I'm, I'll start at the top and go to the end.
Start two-thirds away.
It's a good musical, though, yeah.
Code amendment, there's a, there's a pretty hefty increase there, and I, I see, you know, in the appendix A on those provided, I, I do see that it is, it is very staff-intensive. I guess, you know, some, not all code amendments are created equal, you know, we had somebody come in here that was looking for a code amendment, so that they could be able to put a pool in their backyard, a, a below-ground pool, are we really gonna charge them thirty-five hundred dollars so that we can do that? I, I guess that's my...
So, so that is one of those anomalies, whereas typically we get code amendments...
Typically, it's Chriselle coming in here and saying we want to change the entire city code.
You're a poster child.
I'm okay, but I, I, I'm worried about the little guy who's like, you know, this thing about my fence post is crazy, why can't we change that, and why am I being charged thirty-five hundred dollars to change that?
Yeah, and, 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 you know, we're pretty much looking at code amendments relative to applications.
Okay.
I mean, if, if someone found something inherently wrong with our code...
They can come to us.
I would think that they can ask that, and it could be, it could be a, a city-initiated code, which wouldn't trigger that, however, that's, that's like, less than one percent of the code amendments that you see. Typically, that is, you know, someone coming to you saying, hey, we don't like this, and we want an exception, and here's why, so...
Right.
And I'm not trying to downplay it, because that's part of the evolution of our code, but fundamentally, you know, there, there is, there is a lot of intensive work that goes into it, but if, if you choose, you can certainly do less than that, so for example, a couple pages before, the code amendment, our current fee is a thousand dollars, one hundred percent of the code amendment cost is what we project would be forty-five, we're recommending something, you know, at around the seventy-five percent range, and so, you know, we've come down twenty-five percent off of that. If, for this fee, if you wanted to come back and say, okay, we're only gonna charge fifty percent, or you sixty-six percent, you can see, it's a page, it's page nine of your analysis, you can pick and choose the menu, or you could put it down as low as twenty-five percent or less, so, so this is where you, as a council, have a tremendous amount of latitude to say, hey, we don't want to necessarily penalize the code, the code amendment, you know...
No, and, and I'm, I'm, you know, like I said, if, you know, most of them are development, or developer-initiated, because they don't like the code, or they want it, you know, and those are, those are intensive things, that's not necess, I'm, I'm making, I want to make sure that we're, you know, not charging, you know, John Q. Public thirty-five hundred dollars to make a tweak, but, to, to your point, if they come in public, you know, public comment, we can initiate it from, from the city council.
And, so this is a great example of how this really works together, so as, on any of these fees, if you think that we're charging too much, you can look back a couple pages, and you can kind of see what the hundred percent is. We've tried to target somewhere in the sixty to seventy-five, eighty percent range for fees, assuming that, you know, we're not gonna go for full-cost recovery, some things are gonna be more, more complex, other things are gonna be easier, but that, that's certainly something that we can, we can...
Can I ask a philosophical question really quick? When, what criteria did you use to choose sixty-six versus seventy-five versus eighty percent recovery?
So, we, we took a look at, at, at our City Works data, and we looked at what we had been tracking in, in kind of helping to build that particular model, to say, this is, this is what we've shown, as we've been collecting more and more data, we've been able to look at it and say, okay, this is, this is kind of how intensive something like this is, and certainly, this was done predominantly with Kimber, so it's, you know, Dave has the luxury of being able to blame Kimber and I for being the ones that spearheaded this, but, but fundamentally, we spent a lot of time using her experience dealing with the applications of, of her history with the city, in addition to what we've, we did, and again, we worked with the consultant to come in and say, okay, now, it's not a straight sixty-six percent, it's not a straight seventy-seven percent, we tried to take a look at it, we also took into account the data that you have in here, which is what our other cities charging, and that's certainly not the primary reason, but in some cases, we looked at it and said, wow, you know, we're really, really high relative to other people, so maybe that was one of the things that might have factored into us being a little bit lower, as opposed to at the, you know, seventy-five percent range, but it's, we typically tried to fall in, in a reduced rate, you know, much under the full-cost recovery.
Yeah, no, and, and, I'm, I'm okay, given the discussion, I'm okay with leaving that where it is then. The next one was the concept plan. This, again, I'm kind of, I'm thinking of those outliers, I mean, we had the, I'm trying to remember their name, but they're down there by Neptune Park, right next to our pond, they've got like six houses.
Oh, you're thinking of...
Something Two.
Meadows.
Meadows, something Meadows Two.
So, so interesting, let me...
Just, I mean, but, my point is, is just for a small, I mean, I get it for, you know, a hundred and two-hundred house development, it's, there's a lot of review, but for something that's small, I'm, I'm, I'll tell you where I'm going. The, you know, looking at the engineering, you know, there's kind of like a, a gradation, you know, if you're like, if you're small, you don't pay as much as if you're a big thing, I'm kind of wondering if maybe that's the right direction to go on this one.
So, with the concept, please understand that, that this could be someone bringing in something on the back of a napkin, and it could be someone that has a really large project. Typically, what we'll do is, we will meet with, with people, and they'll come in and say, hey, this is what I'm doing, and they'll bring in the, literally, we'll have graph paper, and someone just kind of drawing something, not to scale, we'll meet with those people, we'll talk with them, that's fine, but after so many iterations, we're gonna have to look them in, in the eye and say, you know what, if you're ready to take this as a concept plan, you need to have it drawn up professionally, or you need to spend some time in demonstrating that, but, but that time gets built into the reviews, it gets built into going before the, the various approval authorities, and so it's not just a straight thing. So, I, I understand what you're saying, my experience would tell me that sometimes the larger, more professional projects are much easier than some of the, some of the projects brought in by someone doing a really small project, because they don't have the expertise in the land development, and so we actually spend more time holding their hands, getting them through the entire process.
Well, I think the engineering costs actually bear that out, because if you look at the valuations on the engineering costs, it's actually percentage-wise less with the higher valuations.
Right, and so, once, once you get into some other phases of the applications, you'll start to see those fees based on acreage, based on number of lots, and so we've tried to scale it, but at the same time, keep it relatively, you know, the difference between, you know, forty-five lots and fifty lots, not a big deal, fifty lots and a thousand lots, big deal, you know, six lots and, you know, and fifteen lots, I mean, it just, it's, it's kind of a sliding scale, but we've tried to factor that in in other areas where we felt it was more appropriate, but, but we're not talking about someone coming in and talking to us, we're not gonna say, okay, pay a fee before we talk to you.
And I get that, but I mean, I'm still thinking of, you know, I can think of landowners that own five, ten acres, and they're not gonna be doing a big development, you know, it's gonna be like this Meadows thing, I think that was...
Smaller.
And, and I just don't, I mean, I just can't see that being the same cost to the city as a, you know, several hundred-unit development.
Could I suggest, if you wanted a hybrid look at, tie it to size, development, number?
Yeah, and that's, if they're taking more reviews, then yes, they should pay for them, but if, I mean, if, you know, just because he's got five lots that he wants to put on his five-acre parcel, and he's, maybe he's an engineer, and he can do them, do it himself, we're gonna charge him twenty-five hundred dollars, just, you know, it just seems inordinate.
Well, again, you know, something that comes to you guys two or three times, that's multiple staff reports about reviews...
Right, but they would have to, they would have to be paid, that's where it's...
So, in this...
Maybe more done on the number of reviews, or the number of meetings that are required for it, rather than just a flat fee.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, some concept plans, or minor subdivisions, they don't even sign a commission?
And, and some of those things are already factored into it, if you look at the number of reviews, or the, the meetings, or something like that, so, for example, a development in agreement minor, just because it's the top of the page, it, it doesn't have a planning commission or city council, but it does have a twelve-hundred-dollar fee associated with a couple of different staff reviews, and so if you keep going through the process, then we could charge more fees, but we wouldn't be charging the fees to say, have all the staff and all the, you know, all of the, the process of, of going to a public meeting. So, we've tried to make it scalable, and if, if you want, you know, if you're concerned about concept, you're, you're gonna be reducing the fee for a concept plan, based on, like, the very small number of applications that we get.
Well, and that's what the thing I'm saying, I'm not trying to reduce the concept fee, the concept plan fee, I'm just trying to make it fair, so that we're not, I mean, there's some of these things where ten percent of their project cost is going to be paying us fees, you know, they have, like, in the engineering fees, if they have a twenty-thousand-dollar project, they're paying ten percent of that to us, so, I mean, that's, that's, that's a large burden to place on, on a small project, maybe, maybe it's warranted, maybe it's not, that's a discussion we have to have.
Sure.
I just, I'm, I'm looking at breaking up the concept plan into a small, little, little itty-bitty concept plan, and then everybody else, that's where I'm at, maybe I'm the only one.
Is that maybe, like, under five acres or less, and then above five acres?
Sure, something like that, yeah.
But I don't know that five acres is the right number.
Right, maybe it's ten, I don't know.
That's the challenge, but, but again, you could have something very complex that's gonna come in, that's gonna just go right under the radar, because it's a very sophisticated developer, and it's actually much, much easier...
Maverick on the corner of Pioneer Crossing, I mean, Redwood Road and Pony Express.
Compared to someone who's just doing it, so I, again, I'm just trying to give you philosophical discussions, I'm not trying to...
Well, Mark, a good point is the Maverick on Pony Express and Redwood Road, a very small property, but that is a very big project, and we had many reviews, and we'll probably have two or three more reviews on that, so it's hard to do it based on acreage.
Right, and, and the complexity...
I like, I like your point to, like, the number of reviews or meetings that are required.
And to some extent, if I'm reading... And to some extent, if I'm reading this correctly, we're, you're looking at that and whether or not the base price is, you know, where we want to be at or not. But we're talking about, if you look at it, it says on that that every, oh, it's not.
So on the concept plan, every additional review, um, it would go up.
Oh, no, it is. Yes, so over on page nine. Is that page?
Yeah, page, page, actually, page eleven.
Uh, I knew I'd seen it, sorry.
Under the recommended fees, page eleven.
Where it's an additional twelve hundred or whatever it is per.
Every time you get an additional review, it'd be twelve fifty, so.
So I guess, but they get two reviews included in?
In the base price.
In the base price? Is that, is that typi- is two reviews typical?
What Kimber and I did was, we, we had the conversation, okay, on, not on the real hard ones, not on the super easy ones, what's, what's typical of what we get. And, and again, the, the hard and the easy doesn't actually depend on acreage. It's the skill of the, the applicant.
I guess maybe, maybe my thought would be, um, you know, do, do it at twelve fifty with one included review and then they, they're just, that way, if they're requiring a lot of reviews, they're just paying by, per review. That's, and that's just, that's my thought. But I'll let everybody else weigh in on that. Um, we'll move on and we'll be here all night. Uh, development agreement, I just, what's the difference between that and master development agreement? I feel like I should know the answer to that, but I just don't. I, I didn't understand what, because it's not included in, in the appendix A. It's like, it seems like it's a new thing that we're creating this new term.
It's actually based off of the code. There's times where the, where Title Nineteen referred to master development agreement and then there are other times that it refers to a development agreement. A master development agreement takes more time.
I know what a master development, I mean, we deal with those, and I, I know we have development agreements. Just, and can you give me a example of what's, what's in a development agreement that's not in a master development agreement? Like, why would we use one over the other?
Yeah, you, the planners will have to speak to, to give you more details, but a master development agreement applies to a, a larger property that's specified in Title Nineteen for how many acres.
Right, I mean, we use those for, you know, the district area, Fox Hollows, like some of the big ones. I'm just.
It's typically.
Development agreements, like the ones that we signed with like, with Maverick, saying you have to, you have to get easements from your neighbors. I'm just trying to get a.
That, that's a good example.
Okay. Development agreement is not, not a master development agreement, you know.
Okay. I, that's, that's just what I wanted to.
Well, yeah, okay. I guess.
So we just spent twelve hundred dollars listening to the definition of a master development agreement.
The terms, the terms are mutually exclusive.
Okay. No, I, 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 I get that. I was just, I'm, I'm looking for some real world. So I, so.
So as I'm looking at this and saying we're charging fifteen hundred dollars for this, what are they getting for their money?
The community, community plans require a master development agreement. Those separate development agreements that are attached to rezone, those are regular standard development agreements. There are times in the code where it says a master development agreement must be entered into by the parties and those, those are the ones that we're referring to.
So, so I mean, this is going to get to one of my philosophical, you know, I've had, I've had discussions about this, um, but, you know, some, some of these costs that we're, that we're charging for, I think that they should be recouped. But some of the time, we have, we have certain members of staff that like, this is kind of just their job, that's to review contracts and stuff like that. And I, I realize we want to try and recoup some of that, but it's, it's, in some ways, it's a sunk cost. Um, and so I, you know, I don't necessarily, you know, I, I know that, and in this case, the development agreement, these are primarily going to be, what, planning and, and Kevin?
Planning, Kevin, I'm going to take a look at it. We're going to have Cindy, who's going to have to put it on an agenda.
It's just because it's not in this.
Right.
Appendix A. Uh, there's no breakdown for the development agreements. There's just a breakdown for the master developments. And so, you know, whereas some of these I can look at and say, okay, well, ten percent of that time is admin time, which I'm less, less inclined to charge to, to the developer, whereas the planner and the director, all that stuff time, I, I'm much more inclined to put that entire burden on the developer.
Well, but, but some of, I mean, it, it's, you, you mentioned sunk cost. It philosophically comes down to that. Again, if we were charging one hundred percent, I would be much more concerned. But where we're charging a ramp down fee, some of that's already getting lost just by choosing a ramp down fee, um, by not going with the full one hundred percent, by choosing.
And I absolutely agree, but where I don't know what that breakdown is, I, you know, and some of these like, you know, I looked at one and I'm like, oh, well, that, you know, fifteen percent of it is admin time. We're only charging them seventy-five percent. So that feels like we're, we're already kind of taking care of that, where there's no development agreement breakdown. I just.
Right. And, and again, that's where we were looking at this, trying to ask ourselves the question, what is a, a fair thing? We had the analysis on a master development agreement and we said, okay, um, it's a lot less than this and we factored it down to what we felt like was an appropriate thing. Um, again, you know, that's part of the challenge though is, is, we've just, we've, we've struggled in the past with trying to recoup our fees. And, and I'm not even suggesting that we recoup our fees, uh, fully. I'm just suggesting that we've got to do better than what we've done and this is a more comprehensive list than what we currently have. And I think that this gives much greater flexibility. So for the applicant that is on top of it, that's using the minimum number of reviews, the minimum number of everything, it's going to sail through and they're going to be quite happy, I think, with the fees. For something that keeps getting stuck in a perpetual process because say, you know, the engineers want to come in and argue with Gordon and won't, you know, they're not finding a common ground to move forward their project, then I guess in, in my, my recommendation is, is that, yeah, we bill them for that because that's costing us, it's a hard, it's a hard cost. Even though we need a city engineer on staff, it, it's costing us time. It's costing us money and frankly, it's also, you know, it's delaying other projects and other people and things like that, so.
No, and, and, yeah, I, I, I'm not disagreeing with you on that. I'm just saying, you know, it was hard for me to, to evaluate the development agreement, you know. I, I don't necessarily know that I, you know, having, looking at it now and, and kind of being able to pin down what a development agreement normally it covers. I, I, I'm not necessarily having huge heartburn over those, the figures in here. I'm just, I'm trying to, you know, it, it's hard for me to make the analysis if I don't have a breakdown of what.
And, and please understand, I realize that this was a big thing. That's why we, we brought it to you a couple weeks ago, let you digest it. And then we appreciate the comments and questions.
And, and, you know, ideally, I would have got some of these answered offline, but I've been out of town a lot, so it's, that's on me. Um, I'm going to skip that one. The village plans, I see that we're like eliminating, are those being rolled into the cost of the community plan?
Um, so typically, uh, let me, let me take a look here. So on village plans, that's page thirteen. Um, we, we kind of built the village, uh, plan with major improvements and minor, uh, or ma- major, minor. And some of it is built into the community plan. So yes, we did ca- capture some of it as part of the overall process, but then basically what we're saying is, is look, if, if we're continually going through, um, this, like for example, village plan custom coding, if they want to write specific code for that, it's just going to be cost plus is what we're, what we're recommending.
Okay, so, so I, I, I was looking at the spreadsheet that we were sent earlier today. That's what I, and on, on there, it's got a, it's got a blank as though we're not charging a fee there.
No, it's going to be cost plus.
Yeah, it's going to be cost. Okay, that's, that's fine.
And we've got our costs broken out in this analysis.
Um, and so then, last two. I'm looking at the, I'm, again, I'm looking at the spreadsheet that was sent to us today. Um, the engineering costs for the, uh, I don't have the.
Grading permits and, and those things.
And not the grading, the, this is the encroachment calculator. Oh, no, the engineering calculator is the one I'm looking at.
Okay. Um, and that's based off of the cost of the.
That's based off of the cost of the project.
Um. Table twenty-two, page nineteen, if you're looking.
Page nineteen? Okay. Yeah. Um, although these no, oh, I'm just trying to make sure, because these numbers don't seem to match up with the numbers.
Again, um.
The spreadsheet's different than what's in the table.
Yeah, the spreadsheet, what we tried to do with the spreadsheet, and I apologize, it, it's, it's fancy and it's, it's great, but it's asking you to put some inputs in to try and come up with what those are going to be. So like the value of it and other things, like for example, if you put in number of units or number of acres, it would kind of modify those things to give you more ability to kind of do a, a sensitivity.
Play around with it.
Yeah. And so I apologize that we didn't, you know, again, we're trying to guess at, at what we might need to prepare for, so I apologize.
Okay. Um, I, so I'll just go back to my, the comment I made earlier, like a twenty-thousand-dollar project, um, is, according to this table, comes out at twenty-four hundred dollars. You know, that's ten percent. Is that, I mean, what? I, I guess I'm, I'm, like, is this something where they're bringing something in and they're basically asking the city to engineer it for them?
So, no, so this is.
So that's typical, that's what we pay typically for an engineering.
This is typically, so like, for example, um, this is Mark Edwards's crew to go and inspect and manage various projects that are getting built. So they've, they've had roadways designed. They've had those things improved. And so we, we've typically charged a percent of the, the estimated construction cost. And so this is just refining that. So rather than being a straight percentage, it's doing a, a dollar now amount plus a percent in the, in the smaller ones. But then that percent decreases dramatically the more expensive the improvements get.
Right.
So you go from a three percent on the smaller project on up to a one point five percent as you get down the bottom. But there's that base cost that goes into it that, that's elevated as well.
Right. So I guess, I guess my question is, I mean, is that, I mean, are these little projects taking up that much time that we, that they need to be the higher improvement value?
Yeah, it, it depends on the builder. I mean, but, but even, even phenomenal builders, I mean, they're dealing with subcontractors that are trying to, to be as efficient and cost-effective as they can. Well, if they cut a corner, you know, we've had to rip out sidewalks before. We've had to rip out things even on small projects because they failed to get it inspected or they failed to, you know, follow the process. So it's, it's, it's a challenge. We think that this is fair. And again, this, in this case, we worked with, with public works and engineering inspectors to come up with some of those fees.
Okay. And then, um, the last one was on the grading. Table twenty-six, I guess it is.
Page twenty-two, table twenty-six.
Um, I guess, can you just, like, so you have the base administrative fee regular and the base administrative fee engineered. What's the difference between those two? This might be for.
Our grading ordinance allows you to get approvals for certain grading activities that are smaller than a certain amount. Regular. It means you, you do a scope where we want to see all the things you're doing.
At that point, we're reviewing engineering.
So, but then we also have a level where people are, like if it's less than six inches or something, that they don't even have to come in, right?
And that would be under the base fee.
And this wouldn't even apply to them because they're not even getting a grading permit.
Right. So there, there's, there's, there's a small level. You're doing very minimal grading. You can just do that without a permit. This is for the next level up.
Next two levels up.
So to do like landscaping on your yard, most of those things would not require a permit.
Right.
Then you get to that acreage point and that's that base two hundred dollars. And then you get above it and then it's that three twenty-five plus.
What, yeah. Okay. No, that, that's, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, you know, the guy doing his yard is now having to pay two fifty to get a permit. I want to make sure we're sticking with what we were doing before.
This does not amend the, the grading code.
Okay.
So this only talks about fees when you're already under the purview of them.
Right. I just want to make sure that this meant what I thought it meant. So that's, I'm, that's my question. I'm done. Sorry.
And there, and under the, under that code, there are times that they would have to get a grading permit. Like, but it would also, I mean, there's like building permit for like retention walls. There could be backyard installations that require the permit if, if they're large enough, but the majority of them wouldn't.
Let me, yeah. Academically, I feel like I'm defending my paper. This is awesome. Other questions, mayor and council?
Okay, um, couple of questions. First is just a why I don't understand. So on plot amendments, does not affect right-of-way versus plot amendment affects the right-of-way? Why is it more expensive when it does not affect the right-of-way?
Um, sorry, table and plot amendment that does not impact the right-of-way. Um, because we are not, I mean, once you start impacting right-of-way and start getting into roadways and things like that, um, its complexity changes.
So yes, but shouldn't that make it more effective if it affects the right-of-way?
It, it kind of depends. We've kept the number of reviews and those things consistent, um, but we've kind of separated them out just for that. So you could do a very small plot amendment. Um, I, I would throw it to any of the staff if they can help bail me out on this one because I, it's been months since we did the analysis and I.
I know it's not a huge difference, but it seems funny that it's almost a hundred dollars more expensive when it doesn't affect the right-of-way, if we're looking at the hundred percent cost.
Uh, so there would be, yeah, there'd be more steps if it did impact the right-of-way. There would still need to be the actual plot amendment recorded.
So it should be backward. That's backward.
It, it might be a mistake, but that doesn't, you could just keep them the same.
Oh, I know why it's different. As far as, as far as the actual proposed cost, but I'm looking at the hundred percent. Why would it possibly cost more if it doesn't affect the right-of-way?
If it's going to have that, it's also going to have a, a different type of an application that's going to run with it.
So it's going to have additional costs?
So we reduce that one because there was an additional cost elsewhere.
I'm good with that.
And so, and I apologize. There's a couple of, there's a couple of things like that for exam- uh, I can't think of a great example off the top of my head, but there's some things where, where it's going to come in as part of a package of, of evaluations. And so in some of those cases, we reduce the fee to say, hey, we're already going to have a parallel application fee on this. So let's reduce this. Right.
Perfect. I'm totally fine with that. That's great. Okay, uh, just a couple of questions then on the signs permanent. Um, we're suggesting hundred for the first and fifty for each additional sign. I didn't see anywhere where we are talking about, first of all, whether it's wall, monument, et cetera, are they all the same? And then also the other part of that would be, is it per tenant? Is it per development? So for example, if, if, um, the Smith's building comes in and they've got just their Smith's signs versus the Smith's plus the Papa Murphy's plus the daylight donuts plus the, um, Starbucks because they're all, does that make sense?
So Kimber and I, when we went through this, basically, her argument was, is look, if we're doing a larger sign, it, it's square footage changes, but they're looking at the code the same way it is for a smaller sign.
So are we talking identical signs? Are we talking?
It, it's just a sign.
Like, does the sign have to be an identical sign, different sizing, or is it?
This is your, your, just your sign permit. Um, like typically, those kinds of signs are going to be addressed largely during their application process as part of the other review as to whether it meets code on that. So this is going to be like a, um, adding a new sign to a business or something like that.
So a new wall sign.
Uh, it could be a new wall sign, but it could also be, um, a little monument sign out in front of the business. It could, it could be something much smaller.
So this is going to be over and above outside of, I guess I should say, the actual typical process where we're going through and they have our, their signs.
Correct. So we're going to review sign packages as part of their application.
Okay.
And that's factored into it. But this is like, um, Dave, what's a good example?
Well, so for example, if I'm not.
Somebody wants to add a monument.
Well, if I'm not mistaken, um, the area that used to be the tire store, that's now a bunch of small businesses. They're finally putting a monument sign in.
Correct. This would be one of those kinds of things, yes. And, and again, um, Kimber's argument was, if I remember it correctly, was, you know, it, we're reviewing the sign code. It's going to be one person. It's going to be looking at this and it's going to comply. It's not going to comply. If it doesn't comply, it's going to need to comply or they're going to have to go through a code amendment, which is going to trigger other fees on the other side. So we kind of tried to keep it very uniform and concise.
Okay, that, that makes sense. I'm fine with that. Uh, just a clarification on the conditional use permits for the home occupations. This is just those items and this is more for just clarifying in my mind. Uh, for example, a daycare where they have to have, uh, meetings and hearings and things like that. This is not your typical home business where we are now not even charging a fee because they don't have any customers coming, et cetera, et cetera.
Correct.
Okay.
Those things that require a conditional use permit.
Okay.
Um, so it's CUP amendment, home occupation or home occupation. And the levels change between a staff approval versus a planning commission approval if it's required at those different levels.
Perfect, okay. Those were really my only questions. Um, as far as, uh, the comments about specifically the, the concept plan, um, I can see, starting with the one review and twelve fifty and then going from there. I don't have a problem with that. I think that most of them are going to be more than that. They're going to have more than one review. So I think we're going to end up at about the same spot, but.
I, I think two reviews is probably.
Typical.
Most people, they bring it in, we're going to say, ah, here's the issues, here's this, here's that. They're going to bring that back. That'll be the second review and we're hopefully ready to go. And that's, that's your typical process when you get a formal application. And that's kind of our hope is to try and say, look, we're going to get it.
So really, nobody gets through with one review, is what you're saying?
Um, that's kind of like the mythical unicorn. I just don't know if they exist.
From your discussion, you made it sound as though there were, there were some of these unicorns wandering around.
Uh, there, there could be. I just can't think of one off the top of my head.
Okay.
Um, I, no one's brought up yet the fact that if it's a rezone request for a down zone, it's substantial.
No, that's his. You took away his. Well, I'd say, we talked about it last time anyway, though, but yes.
Steven called dibs.
All right, sorry about that, I didn't.
No, those are, those are really my only questions, I appreciate, um, making sure we're trying to cover.
A big red bar here.
A little bit more of our costs, so.
I skipped that one.
You can't take them all when you go first. It's okay, Shelley, we appreciate your thoroughness. So, in terms of the concept by review, um, I think that we should stick with the standard what we're used to, and if we wanted to put a clause in that says if you come in and you only have one review, we can credit back, because I'd rather be crediting than having to go after more money, but, I mean, just, for me, I don't, it's a little bit of a paperwork issue, but I think that when that mythical unicorn comes through, and then I also think that staff, um, needs to be directed, and I think you probably already are, if a resident's coming in and have a swimming pool, I think what we didn't do is we didn't go through code amendment, they actually came to us, and then we brought it through code amendment, um, and so I think that we just need to make sure that there's good verbiage with our staff, so that they tell people if it's a resident who's just doing a swimming pool or a trampoline or something, and for some reason they needed to have a code amendment, because our code doesn't work, to work through the mayor and the council.
So you're suggesting you don't want us to charge you for council-directed code amendments? Because you're included in this.
It's our job, no, but like, for some of those small, like, code amendments, because I agree with you, Chris, I mean, that is not appropriate for us to be charging thousands of dollars or whatever, it's not the, it's not the intent of the, of the document, and so I think that we can with that, and for me, again, if we can find the right number and the right balance and whatever, I would rather just sort of, here's what we standardly are seeing, a two review, here's the cost, and then if they do one, have some kind of clause that allows us to refund, and then for me, um, the only other thing I had too was, um, I think that it would be helpful if we have, um, when this goes up on the site and these things are made available, if there's some good paragraphs or verbiage that say that this is primarily intending for development, for larger developments, for, um, big projects, and that residents, I don't know, because we don't want residents looking at some of this thing going, ah, you know, if we can have something or some kind of an asterix, because when I first started looking through this, I would admit, I was similar to Chris, I was like, what are they asking, this is insane, and then as I started realizing, oh, no, this is for Chris L. Then it was, then it made more sense, right, because of, of the amount of work that, of those large projects take, um, and then, there was also, um, again, I, just I want on the record that I appreciate that the recommendation wasn't to try and get a hundred percent all of the time, um, and then I also want to have on the record that I think that, um, I've made it very clear that fees should pay for them, the services that they provide, and we're not doing that, and so there has to be an adjustment in these fees, these fees do have to go up where appropriate, um, but they've gone down where appropriate as well, I mean, it's not like it was a universal, let's raise the fee in every single category, there was areas where we realized that the nature of our business, that we're, as a city, we're getting better at things, and different things are going faster, we're doing them in a more streamlined process, as a council, we've given things back to staff, which streamlined it and reduced the cost, and so, I want that on the record, that the city council, through our decisions, and from recommendations from the staff, we have now seen a reduction in fees in certain areas, because not every single thing has to come to the city council, which adds cost, um, and even the minor amendments don't have to come back now, that saves cost, and so, I just wanted to make sure that that got on the record, because sometimes we always focus on all the increases, and we didn't notice all of the efforts that we have made over the last seven years, and really the last two and a half, three years, really pushing to streamline our approval process, um, to be more favorable to our developers and make them, um, have an enjoyable process, and we've heard great feedback from many of our developers over the years as we've made these changes, uh, and then, there was one other note, I'm trying to remember, if I remember it, I'll ask the mayor to speak again, but overall, I think that, um, those two graphs, I absolutely want those online with this, showing that we are not covering our costs, and within two years, we've actually covered our costs, because to me, I can show that to anyone, anytime, any day, and say, we're justified in these increase, these increases, because property and sales taxes, to your point, property taxes is not meant to do, to be, help developers, the last thing a resident wants to think is that their property taxes are helping people build more big developments in the city, right, and then our sales tax, the same thing, we, our sales tax should not be used for this as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you, I, I appreciate we're targeting, what did you say, Mark, between seventy?
Sixty, seventy percent.
Fifty to eighty, just depending on rounding, sometimes when it's a small amount, if you're rounding up to the nearest five hundred or something like that, um, because I, I am supportive of recovering direct costs, um, the indirect costs, like, such as primarily all the staff in this room, I just don't want us, well, what, you're all administrative staff, and necessary regardless of the state of the economy, is I don't, if we were doing a hundred percent including indirect costs, we'd be too dependent on one-time revenues, because then we'd say, hey, we have this extra money in general revenues, we could bond, or et cetera, whatever it may be, and then, that's kind of the position the city was, not as extreme, obviously, but when the last recession, as they were highly dependent on there, and I'm, anyway, so it, it keeps us out of that even considering that, when we're targeting seventy to eighty percent, um, because it's not like Kevin's, uh, losing out money by not selling widgets to other cities or something, legal advice, he's not a revenue generator, so. That's a, a. Hey, I, in my, uh, one business law class, um, anyway. I don't even know where to go with that, anyway, so, I, I'm comfortable between, you know, the, the sixty and eighty to account for those indirect costs, so we don't put those on one-time revenue, as far as the concept plan goes, I like having a caveat, caveat in there, is if it doesn't go through the standard reviews, that we can credit it back to them, I like that approach, that was a good recommendation there, um. So the, the one item that you brought up that I have highlighted, Red, the rezon less dense than the general plan, I'd actually prefer to keep that fee at zero, because we want to encourage developers to reduce the density, that, I know it's going to take a loss, but I think the residents would be happy to pay for that, that's a lower density.
So, so I would like clarification, because if you decide to go that, well, but like, commercial to a mixed use is technically a downzone?
Residential reduction.
Okay, so, just if you're going to do something like that, be very specific, uh, from a residential to a lower residential. But, but again, well, we're going from, you know, five units to the acre to five point, or four point nine units to the acre.
It's a rezon from like an R, sorry, these are old zones, but like an R four to an R three.
Okay, so just be very specific.
So, at, at the same time, I think that many of our residents would also be, um, amenable to getting rid of apartments and going to commercial, or to business park, which is actually an upzone technically, I'm just saying, it's a, it's a side zone.
Yes. So. If, if it's a rezon that reduces the number of residential units, is that specific enough? Tell it, or councilman, but I'm saying a rezon that results in less residential units. Whatever, like, we can figure it out at some point, I just want a zero, I'm just going to send that, i- if resulting in, from a high density to a medium density, and we're downgrading and getting less density, that's.
So, what if you, what if you made that the condition, not necessarily a specific zone change, but decreasing from, either from high to medium or medium to low, according to our standards?
If, if I could, um, might I suggest you take, instead of it being fifteen hundred dollars, maybe reduce it to five hundred dollars, or a thousand dollars, or reduce it, so that there's still some sort of a fee associated with it, that way, um, you know, we can, we can apply that appropriately, if you want it to be zero, you can have it be zero.
My standpoint is I want to be an encouragement.
Right, I, I understand it, but, I mean, looking at this in real terms, fifteen hundred dollars to somebody who's building Aldera is not a large amount, amount of money, I mean, I, I, I get where you're at philosophically, and wanting to encourage that as much as possible, and so, for that reason, I'm like, yeah, let's go with zero, but, I mean, in reality, like, if they're downzoning from a large property to a slight, you know, I mean, these are, these aren't going to be, you know, the one Z, two Z developers.
But we have Fox, we have Fox Hollow, though, they had, what, maybe, they, you know, they had that development where they had the duplexes and they're making it to a single family, you know, that would be one where we would have charged them fifteen hundred dollars, where their profit is probably, that's, that's going to be five, four, five percent of their profit, so.
I, I don't think, I, if they're only making that much profit on them.
You'd be surprised how much they, well, okay, we're talking write-offs, I, I, you know, maybe you don't do a lot in business, but I do, and I'm, I'm writing off things all the time, because that's what corporations do, you write off, and so they're going to be writing off everything, this is just one more encouragement, just to help them do that, so.
We do.
Their final profits are usually pretty tight, usually four, four to nine percent margin.
Right. And we do have some hard costs associated with rezon, like newspaper notices and other things, so.
And I appreciate, I understand there's costs, and I, I'm not making a, like, a political statement here, it's just, four years ago, Proposition Six was passed aggressively, and I don't want anything that portrays the city as discouraging lowering density, and that's where I'm at. I know, I know, like, you know, if it's a multimillion dollar project, fifteen hundred dollars, whatever, but, yeah, I'm kind of that.
But there's also a principle of paying for your costs, and when we have outside costs, for example, like noticing and things like that, those should be covered, I, I don't think that we should be completely subsidizing a development, yes, we want to encourage, but some kind of a, they've got to have some skin in the game.
And I think that's a fair point, there's a whole lot of other fees where they'll have skin in the game.
They still have the development fees, this is, I mean, literally, they have all the development fees, and then we're also charging them money to reduce their density on top of it.
I mean, they're, they're all good points, that's just, that's my stance, so.
I'm in favor of zero on that one.
So on the upzone, you'll notice the upzone is much closer to the one hundred percent cost recovery, so, keep in mind, we gave you a gradient of, of choices, so if it's, you know, if it's kind of a midland, it's, it's right around the, the three thousand dollar, which is about the sixty-six percent. Okay. Okay, and it's just slightly below the one hundred percent, but it's closer to that. It's on page nine, or ten, sorry, ten, uh, second, second row up. So I, again, just be clear in your, in your, in your motion.
Okay, well, my computer's restarting right now, um, but I have some notes here, so. Yeah, can we change the seating here? So just a couple, a couple of things, I, I just wanted to echo the sixty-eight percent, I completely agree with that, uh, to keep us in a, safe, not doing a hundred percent, um, and, uh, one thing I really liked about this study is just seeing that we're trying to, uh, not have the residents covering so much, um, uh, again, to your point with the graphs, that is, is amazing to see how much the fees we're not covering, uh, currently, and so, uh, making those adjustments, going through this much work to get those fees up to where, uh, it is being covered by the developers, uh, I am in full support of. I'm also, uh, good with the, uh, credits for less reviews, I like that concept, um, and then, uh, Councilman Wilden, I liked your comment there of, uh, zero, just for the rezoning, uh, or downzoning, uh, the reason for that is, I think that'll also bring questions up, uh, from the developer, saying, why is this one zero, and so it'll start the conversation of, uh, that we're a city that wants to have less density, um, and so I, I think it just keeps that dialogue open whenever they see that, to ask those questions, um, so if it was slightly less, I don't think it'd even bring up that question, like you're saying, it's not that big of a fee, um.
If I can jump in a little quick, I also like that the, the same zone, asking for the zone that's on our general plan, is actually a little bit lower than the, that sixty-six percent, so we're actually, it's, you know, instead of being thirty-eight, twenty, it's the three thousand, so even that, to stay at what we're asking for.
Yeah.
It's not enough money to change behavior in some cases.
But, yeah, yeah, a hundred percent.
Can we take more? I mean, just the fact that hits the agenda causes a lot more staff.
Absolutely. I actually think you're generous.
Because you didn't take into account, I mean, obviously, there's, when it comes to the city council, you're taking into account of our time here, but when there's an upzone, the twenty hours on phone calls with people, talking about why we're not going, you know, like.
We tried to look at kind of the whole.
You had to be realistic, yeah.
And then come in there and say, okay, where do we think?
Yeah, so.
That's all I had.
Am I doing it?
Yes.
You're all staring at me. All right, I move that we approve the fee schedule amendments, planning development and engineering fees, resolution R seventeen dash ninety-four dated today, um, changing the, sorry, uh, changing the rezon to a less, I don't know, well, let's see, changing the rezon to less dense GP to, um, zero for rezones that have fewer residential, well, we did, we never did decide on how you guys wanted to.
So a residential downzone?
A residential downzone. You guys can figure out the exact wording on that, um, and then, uh, changing the rezon to a more dense than the general plan, to fifty-eight hundred, and then, uh.
I'm sorry, uh, for the, I'm sorry, what was?
The upzone, that's the upzone.
So the upzone to.
And a hundred percent.
To a one hundred percent?
Yep.
It rounds up to fifty-eight hundred.
It was, it was a ninety-eight point, something.
It, it, in the book, it says fifty-seven, eighty-eight, and I just.
So can I say fifty-seven, fifty?
Fifty-seven, that's what I had, and then she made me change it.
You just rounded down.
I, I'd recommend rounding down on that one.
That's fine. And then the, the other one was the. And then some sort of policy for being able to refund, uh, on concept plans if they only use one review.
Can, can I make a suggestion, if you're going to do that, it would be much easier for us to just take it down to one concept review at the twelve fifty, and then just make the recommended fee that, and then every time we have to see it again, just charge them the twelve fifty.
If that's easier for you, then that's fine.
I, I, I think in, in my world, I'd just as soon do that than, than.
I was trying to make it easier, but they. I'm trying to, I'm trying to be friendly, so, I believe those.
We're just going to be going after people for money.
Yeah. That was the only thing.
Okay, I've got a first from Councilman Porter.
I'll second that.
I have a second from Councilman McComber, any further discussion on the motion? Roll call, Porter.
Aye.
Barch.
Aye.
McComber.
Aye.
Wilden.
Aye.
Podeska.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
We have the approval of the minutes for September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we approve the minutes for September nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, with the changes that were submitted and posted.
Second.
Okay, I have a first from Councilman, uh, Porter, second from Councilwoman Barch, any further discussion? Okay, roll call, Podeska.
Aye.
Wilden.
Aye.
McComber.
Aye.
Porter.
Aye.
Okay, uh, motion to enter into closed session.
So made, for the reasons stated on the agenda.
Second.
I have a first from Councilwoman Barch, second from Councilman McComber, any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If we could just move over to the conference room? All right.